They will remain standing for the presence of the flag, and I'd like to introduce your Archbishop, Bruce Smith Holmes, the pastor of the light of the world Christian Tabernacle in Stockbridge, Georgia.
Thank you so much. Let us look to the Lord. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity to invoke your presence in this place today as we do your business. We thank you, Father, that as public servants, we are actually your ministers to do your work in the community for the betterment of the community. And, Father, we thank you now that as we reason together, that we will be heart to heart, spirit to spirit, that we heal with our hearts and not just our ears. And, Father, we thank you for the blessing in this place. Meet every need that is represented in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to announce that we are most likely not on TV at this time live. It will be recorded, as I understand. We have some technical difficulties, but it may be on TV now, it may not be, but they're working on it. As we speak, it will be recorded and available later today. Having said that, Hona County Board of Commissioners, nine o'clock a.m., Tuesday, July the 7th, 15th meeting, please come to order. We have the amended agenda. It's a little different than published. The only thing that I see that needs to be deleted, I understand that we need to take the Henry County Airport Resolution is not ready, so we're going to take that off. It's been whistled on. So, having said that, does somebody move the agenda as published with that amendment?
So, move.
Have a motion, District Three.
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Before we move into public comments, we have three that signed up, in the order they signed up was five, six, and seven. Okay. The five is talking about the change name of Panola Road, and if you'll notice, we have a public hearing for that later. It's under the public works where it says public hearing resolution for a name change. Okay. We've got one for that, and we've got two for comments for the pawn shops. That is also a public hearing. If you'll notice, I will recognize comments for that at that time. Now, we also got another one just presented about pawn shops and payday loans. Okay? What I'd like to do is save these four, and you come up during the public hearing on the issue. Does anybody object to that? That's one of the four, and you know who you are. If no objection, I'm going to take these and put them, and you will be recognized during the public comment session. I see no objection. Okay. Next, we have citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during a portion of the meeting. All persons wish to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments speaker form, or you will not be recognized, and you'll be able to address for four or five minutes. So, let me back up. Simply because you're not one of these four here that has to be speak, you can, during the public hearing, you can be recognized and speak as well. So, having said that, in the order, we have number one is Heather Suzanne Hiddonoff. State your name, please, for the record.
I'm Suzanne Midendorf, a woman on the land. Can you hear me? Here? Can you hear me?
We got that one on.
Living at forty-three Thurman Road, Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I yield my time to Carl Alfred. Yield my time to Carl Alfred.
Okay, so y'all going, both of y'all signed up for five minutes.
Yes.
So, you're going to utilize the five minutes for the both of you. Okay?
Gentlemen, good morning. Carl Swenson, forty-three Thurman Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. We have started on the little quest of investigating what the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation is, what it's been. And I started on that, but I didn't get a chance to really get into it the last go-around, so I wanted to read a little bit about what this corporation is and who's involved. First, I want to read off who the people involved in this are. The Board of Directors for the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation. The affairs of the corporation shall be managed by a Board of Directors. All corporate powers shall be exercised by or under the authority of, and the affairs, property, and business of the corporation shall be managed under the direction of a Board of Directors consisting of six persons. The members of the Board of Commissioners of Henry County shall be the directors of the corporation. Term of office commences and ends with your term of office. The Board of Directors shall have the rights and duties of directors of corporations under the Georgia Nonprofit Corporation Code. In the event, the number of directors shall be less than four. The remaining number or members of the board shall be sufficient, they'll make them sufficient to come up to the number of three. Okay? So, what that's saying is, as soon as you are elected into office and take your oath, you immediately become Board of Directors, of which Mr. Smith, you are recognized as the CEO. Shay Mathis is the secretary. And, curiously, Fred Oletta is the CFO. Now, the six members, according to the bylaws or according to the articles, are only supposed to be you gentlemen up here. But you seem to be able to throw in somebody else, and I guess he's your CFO from Henry County of. So, that is kind of operating outside of your charter. But the more interesting part about this is the purpose for which you were formed, because the purpose is to basically do business with yourselves. Don't know how that works, but let's take a look at it. The purpose for which the corporation is organized and the business and objectives to be carried on and promoted by the corporation are as follows. To engage and assist Henry County, Georgia, the county, in the development, financing, construction, acquisition, reconstruction, and operation of capital projects and equipment consisting of real and personal property for the use and benefit exclusive public purposes of the county, the projects. To acquire by gift, lease, or purchase, and to sell, convey, assign, mortgage, pledge, or otherwise encumber any property, real or personal, incidental to carrying out the projects. So, I bring this up because, gentlemen, I have not seen anything in any of the meetings here and any of the resolutions that reflect this entity going on, nor have I found one that reflects the actions of the Henry County Industrial Office Park Corporation. And last time I checked, yeah, we've got the same sequence. CEO Tommy Smith, CFO Fred Oletta, Secretary Shay Mathis. And I do notice in both cases, Mr. Smith, you are the registering agent of this, of these corporations. Now, what this is is hidden from the people. Now, I can find it, and so anybody else can find it, sure. But do we really have to look and dig to find out what the true nature of this government is? We elected you to fill these chairs. Instead, what we get is a Board of Directors and separate sets of books. And that's the problem here, separate sets of books, double-entry bookkeeping. Now, if that's not going to show up in the capers, please explain to the people where it's going to show up, because with all of these corporations and all of these assets...
Thank you. Now, we recognize Gail Barm. She wants to talk about corporations. Are you the same person that came up? No?
No.
Okay.
Hi, good morning, Gail Barm, two thirty-five Compton Drive, Fayetteville. I yield my time to Carl.
Okay. I know how this got started. The real deal is, by policy, a citizen has to be heard, and you can't be delegating your time. And I accept full responsibility that in the past, there would be two people that signed up talking about the same issue. Now, I will recognize you individually as a citizen, your five minutes, but I will not let you yield to the floor to anyone else.
Thank you anyway.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry for the inconvenience. Thank you. Next, we recognize Oswin Jackson, Police Protection for the City of Stockbridge. Please state your name, please.
Oswin Jackson. I live at three eleven Viceroy Curve in Stockbridge, Georgia. Good morning, Chairman Smith and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to get up this morning and speak before you. A few weeks ago, my wife brought to my attention the issue of police protection in Stockbridge. There was an article in the newspaper stating that, to the effect that the county was about to cut off police protection to Stock, the city of Stockbridge because of some dispute that they had with the city council of Stockbridge. My wife, I've had my wife for forty-eight years, and when she gets upset or concerned, I have to act, do something. So, today, I'm here to ask you to get with the city council of Stockbridge and iron out this issue. From very early part of my childhood, in school, I learned that government, part of government, was to collect taxes to take care of the issues that concern the citizens. And I believe that the millage that I pay to the county is for police and fire protection. And I would hate to find out now that the city of Stockbridge have been getting a free benefit by only paying five hundred thousand dollars a year for police protection, because based on the article, that's what they were saying. And I would hate to have the county abandon the city by removing police protection in my subdivision. Recently, I got an email from the president of our subdivision stating that vandalism has started to go on around our amenities area. And I don't live too far from the amenities area, so if the vandalism starts there, it's probably on the move towards me, and I can't have that. I recently received a statement, a millage statement, showing that my millage rate went down, but my property value went up. So, I believe that I'm still paying the same, if not more, in millage, in the millage rate, which I equate as taxes. I'm hoping that you will be the adult in the room and help the city council. I'm talking to my two commissioners, Commissioner Bruce Holmes and Commissioner Blake Prince, that they would be able to get a proposal that would satisfy the needs of the people in Stockbridge. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have request to appear by Mr. Bill Tony to discuss ethics and appointments. You have fifteen minutes. Wait a minute, let me start the clock. Okay. Thank you.
Bill Tony, sixteen fifty-two Highway one fifty-five North, McDonough, Georgia. Is overhead working on TV?
Is it right?
That'll work. Okay, Mr. Preston, I have a problem, and I feel like it's a conflict of interest. I've been here before about Senator Rick Jeffries serving on the board. He's your business partner at Aqua Genesis. He owns his J and T Environmental, and he's lead engineer for GPT. You also have his brother working for the Water Authority, which I don't have a problem with that, except for you've got his brother over there making a hundred twenty-two thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and nine cent. You've got the general manager, and this was a sticker shot for me, making two hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred six dollars and ninety-one cent. And we're paying Rick. I went over there, and they said that they were meeting once a month now, and usually it was between an hour to two hours at a time. So, if you took his, what we're paying him, I'm assuming, I can't, I'm having a hard time getting information from the Water Authority. But from what I'm getting from over there, he gets eight hundred and fifty dollars a month for two hours, which is four hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. All right? This right here, as far as looking at it from an outsider or from a business standpoint, you've got Lindy Farmer, the general manager over there, making two hundred fifty-six thousand dollars a year, which I think is way extreme. And you've got Jason making the salary. Now, Lindy actually takes his orders from Rick Jeffries. I don't think in, you know, that he could do a proper job supervising Jason when you've got Lindy making this much money. Another thing is, when I was doing my Freedom, I found out that Mr. Welch was the attorney at the Water Authority. And then with Aqua Genesis, I got to looking at the paperwork on it, and that same firm does your work. So, I kind of feel like that might be a little conflict of interest right there. So, the simple thing is, is to take Mr. Jeffries off the board. I actually have Mr. Jeffries resignation. You know about that. All right? What I would like to do is, I'd like you to accept this resignation from him. Do the right thing. You, I don't know how your trust factor goes. I don't know how yours or Mr. Barm or Mr. Moss, but I also have resignations from your appointee to the Water Authority right here. And I also have your resignation, your appointee. You've got five people making a lot of decisions with a budget of over sixty million dollars a year. And if you don't trust them enough to not ask for their resignation when you appoint them, you've got a serious problem. Mr. Barm, you were asked on a forum about appointees one time, and I remember exactly what you said. You said, "If I don't trust the man, I will not put him on it." I've got his resignation right here. Your appointee, Jimmy Carter. I've got yours, Michael Bar, and I've got yours, Rick Jeffries. These other guys, there's no conflict of interest there to me, only Mr. Jeffries. I'm asking you again, do the right thing, take him off the board, put somebody that there's not any conflict of interest on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just going to make a comment. When we first took office, the county attorney suggested that we do these resignation letters. Far as trusting Jimmy Carter, I trust Jimmy Carter my life. On June the second, Mr. Tony came in and presented me some papers that insinuated that Rick Jeffries had a conflict. I looked at the information I had. As far as the county, I didn't see any problem. I turned it over to the county attorney and asked him to look at it. Patrick, would you give us your opinion?
I will, Mr. Barm. I reviewed a number of documents that you provided to me, which included some, looked like a biography of Rick Jeffries from the state senate's website, and a number of pages from his annual or quarterly, I guess, financial disclosure statements. And I didn't see anything in any of those statements that would cause me any ethical concern. He disclosed in some years that he did business with the state. He disclosed in two thousand and nine that he didn't do business with the state. The statute or the code section in state law that requires a public official to report when they do business with the state authorizes that public official to conduct business with the state if it's pursuant to sealed bids. And all of the business that Mr. Jeffries reported doing with the state of Georgia was done under sealed bids. And I got that information likewise from the state's websites, where they, where the state publishes a notice of an intent to award bids, and it showed a number of bids awarded directly to Mr. Jeffries. I spoke with Mr. Jeffries about that, asked him if he did any other business with the state that wasn't through a sealed bid. He assured me he hadn't. I also spoke briefly with the Office of Legislative Counsel, which is a branch of the Attorney General's office that specifically works for the legislature. And I asked him just a few general questions. First of all, I confirmed that the reports, as ours provided, would be the appropriate type of report that a legislator would file if he did do business with the state. He also told me that there were a number of legislators, both in the Senate and the House, that were engaged in professions where they did business with the state, and to their knowledge, most of that business was done through sealed bids, and they would have disclosed them in the same manner. They also told me that it was, which I think most of us already know this, most of our, the overwhelming majority of our legislators have full-time jobs outside of their services legislature, and the majority of those are professionals in the sense that they have business that involve consulting or legal services or something along those lines, and that it's up to each legislature, as far as the state's concerned, to ensure that they're filing the appropriate reports. They also informed me that a very large number, maybe a majority of the members in the legislature, serve on some, in some form or fashion in their local communities, on boards, authorities, or things of that nature. That's, their comment was, that's how these guys operate. They involve themselves in local communities. The net result of all of those things is, I don't see anything that is a legal conflict of interest. I see nothing in any of the documents you provided to me that would disqualify Mr. Jeffries by virtue of his position. He, just like every one of you and any other body, any other person that serves on any public board, may run into instances where there's a conflict of interest. Any of you may run into an instance where a business relationship or a family relationship may preclude you from voting on any particular matter, participating in any particular vote. And the same goes, holds true for Water Authority members and the, and members of the legislator. They may run into instances where they have to recuse themselves. And the Water Authority has separate counsel that I know they keep track of that, and I know they look out for it. The legislature has separate counsel, and that, they exist for one of the purposes they exist is for legislators to call and make those requests. None of us can speak to every business relationship that somebody might have going forward in the future, but there's, there's things in place to protect the public when that happens. But I've seen nothing provided to me that would suggest that there is a standing conflict of interest that needs to be dealt with in this instance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're welcome.
Next, we recognize Ms. Carolyn McKenzie to discuss suicide prevention rally and mental health forum in Henry County. If you would, approach the podium, state your name, and you have fifteen minutes.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Carolyn McKenzie. I live at three zero six Royal Crescent Way in Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm the founder and president of Mental Health in the African-American Community. What I am proposing this morning, well, first of all, I want to say thank you so very much for giving me an opportunity to come and share my vision with you as it relates to mental health in Henry County. As we know, you know, just from looking at the news, that mental illness, we're in an epidemic mode, way past it, as a matter of fact. Look at the jail systems, just look at everything. But my story is really personal. I did not choose this as a profession. It chose me on June the eleventh, twenty, I mean, June fourteen, twenty-eleven. One of the greatest loves of my life, my niece, who I raised as a daughter, had a psychotic break, we never saw it coming. She was still living in my hometown, which is Fitzgerald, Georgia. When I realized that she was having a mental meltdown, I told her husband to bring her to me, to my Stockbridge residence, so I could look after her and figure out what was going on. Day four of being here, I was getting dressed, I was in the shower, and she opened the shower door, and she was standing there with the largest butcher knife from my kitchen, and I never saw that coming. So, fast forward, I was stabbed multiple times in my Jonesboro, I mean, I used to live in Jonesboro, in my Stockbridge residence. I was choked almost to death, and then she killed herself. So, that's very graphic, but I wanted to paint the picture so you can understand the severity of mental illness. of mental illness, if you haven't been thinking about it. It doesn't have a color, it doesn't have a race, it doesn't have an economic status. It is an epidemic. And most of the other counties are doing major things in mental health. And I remember when I first sent the email to you all, I had gotten an email from a DeKalb County Board of Commissioners, and he was promoting this big mental health forum. So I went on the internet and got all of your email addresses, and I said, "Why don't we do a Henry County Mental Health Forum?" But now it has evolved into something more. We can capitalize, in September, the American Association of Suicology has deemed the first and second week in September as National Suicide Prevention. So what I am proposing is that we have a rally, and call it "I Choose to Live." One of my girlfriends in California is designing the t-shirt. We can have a rally on the Friday evening, the second Friday evening, in McDonough, and bring in some celebrity entertainers, because we kind of have a little connection in that area. And then have a couple of people who have attempted suicide, and thank God they're still here. And then have a person whose loved one actually succeeded in, you know, taking his or her life. And then, that evening will be about motivation, encouraging people who are suffering with depression, or people who are suffering in silence, encouraging them to hang in there. And we will provide resources for them, and give them tools, mental health services. We have a network of mental health providers. My national headquarters is located on the corner of Eagles Landing Parkway and Highway 42. We have a lot of national media support. We will bring a lot of media support to Henry County. We bring a lot of attention to Henry County, which is economic development. I'm a businesswoman who loves causes. So I understand the bottom line. So if I can use this as an opportunity to bring attention to Henry County, Stockbridge, you know, Locust Grove, and McDonough, that will increase your bottom line. Maybe more businesses will start coming. I would make it my personal project to bring more business to Henry County, because this is very personal to me. She is the greatest love of my life. And then my doctor's son, who lived with me in Stockbridge, had mental challenges. And I begged Henry County Probate to issue a 1013, and they refused to do that. And I said, "He is spiraling out of control, he's an adult now, I cannot force him to get mental health treatment, I need your help." That's what he got to commit a crime for. So he did. He robbed two banks, and now he's incarcerated. And I'm advocating on his behalf. I don't want that to happen to another mother. We need to bring more awareness of mental illness in Henry County, not just awareness. My agency, I have designed 20 mental health, grassroots mental health programs. As I said earlier, we have a network of mental health providers, we can provide referral services, we have a support group at my office every Monday night. We want to expand, to go to Locust Grove, and to... I know, if I'm correct, is part of Hampton considered Henry County? Is a part of Hampton considered as Hampton? I mean, as Henry County? If so, we want to identify the communities. I know of the three municipalities. We want to have programs. Now, a lot of people ask me, "Carolyn McKenzie, your name... The name of the organization is Mental Health in the African-American Community." Well, my niece, my daughter, is black, and this is her legacy, but it has evolved. We are racially inclusive. I brought Stephanie with me today, and I think she's as Caucasian as you can get, right? And so, the point I'm making is, our program is racially inclusive. We're getting ready to roll out mental health in the Indian community, mental health in the Latino community, mental health in the Asian community, and et cetera. It's just that the history has shown us that the ethnic populations, for some reason, think mental illness is a Caucasian illness. See, you know, Caucasians have been getting mental illness, you know, services from day one. We're just catching on, right? So we... There's a stigma, a huge stigma, in the ethnic population. And the ethnic population in Henry County is growing, you know, rapidly growing. So we need to address this. We want to engage the Henry County churches, the businesses, community organizations. I believe in collaboration, because you can't do it alone. This, it just, it makes no sense. As I said, we have a national media partner, Heart and Soul Magazine did a two full-page spread on our agency, they shared, they published my story. Psychology Today wants to publish my memoirs. And today, we have Henry County Neighbor here. They came... Noreen is the editor of the South Metro Neighbor, and when I sent her the email that I would be presenting today, she says, "I'm gonna send Christine to cover it." So the media follows, you know, follows us, and we need to take advantage of, you know, of that media support. We have lots of volunteers, we have collaborating partners, and we just need to get the Henry County businesses on board. Our goal is to get the Henry County businesses to support this by becoming sponsors and vendors. We'll use this annual event, "I Choose to Live" rally, and the following day, we have an "I Choose to Live" mental health forum, where we have a panel discussion. Every year when we do this, we'll use that money, and it will be earmarked for the residents of Henry County who need mental health support services. Does anyone have any questions?
Talking about bringing businesses in to your organization, how are you reaching out to them?
Well, we do... Are you talking in terms of bringing businesses to Henry County, or how do I ask the businesses for donations?
How do you ask businesses for donations? How are you reaching out to those businesses to get involved in your cause?
Exactly. Well, actually, believe it or not, on 4th of July, I sent out, I said, "God, I need a title sponsor for this, so that way I can go on it and start advertising, right? I need some cash, right?" And I sent out one email, and five seconds later, I get a call and says, "Carolyn, my wife said, 'How much do you need?'" Now, he's not... He owns 12 Burger Kings, and I'm telling him, "You better open up one in Henry County." I don't know if he has one in Henry County now, but I said that to say, I use email, I use text, I use whatever I can. But I needed to get some money to jumpstart this thing, so he's gonna give me the money to jumpstart it. Then, I will reach out to every business in Henry County, give them a proposal. We do have a proposal, and I sent copies of the proposals to you guys, and I'll make sure I send you another copy after today. We're asking the Henry County businesses to be $500 sponsors, $250 sponsors, and $25 vendors. Now, we're gonna use this annual event as a fundraiser, so that money that's left over will be used to help underwrite programs in Locust Grove, mental health programs, McDonough, and Stockbridge. I know my time is up, so I don't want to be selfish. Any other questions?
I would like to make a comment. I'm interested in what you're talking about. As everybody knows, I spent a little bit of time working with the police department, and then some of the issues that we have, you know, we have people with mental health issues, and we don't have anywhere to put them. And they're ended up in our jails, and they're taking up space, and when they come out, they're no better than they were, than when they went in. Now, I know we have a mental health court that we're getting going. Have you been in contact with them, any of the judges, or anything like that?
Well, they're on my list. What I wanted to do was, you know, come and present to you all, because I believe in protocol, you know? Get your support, and then start working from there. Of course, we want to engage Henry County Health Department, because they have a behavioral health unit, DFACS, and all the agencies that are providing services for the mentally challenged. The police department, et cetera.
Got you. Okay, well, stay with me. I think you're... You said you're in Eagles Landing?
I'm sorry?
Where's your company at?
It's located 125 Eagles Landing Parkway. It's in your district. It's on the corner of Eagles Landing Parkway and Highway 42, in the Food Depot Corporate Office. We've been there a year and a half.
Okay, I'm familiar. Stay with me, and get in touch back with me.
Yes, sir.
Because again, with, you know, talking with the police, and then again, the sheriff, there are some issues that we need to handle. And it is, mental health's high on that list, so I appreciate you coming in today.
Commissioner Holmes, thank you so much. And Commissioner Smith, he always returns my emails. I love you guys so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a public service announcement. I've been told that the... This meeting is not on our webpage, but it is live on channel charter 180, and also AT&amp;T Channel 99. But obviously, it is being recorded, so it can either come up during the process of this meeting, or you can get a full copy of it tomorrow. Is that correct? Thank you. Next, we move on. The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda item, the chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete. I'm showing three items. Does anybody like to add or delete either one of the three? If not, I'll read the resolution. Resolution request approval of G.DOT memorandum of understanding to install signs and strapping of various off-system routes in Henry County. We have a resolution accepting a grant award in the amount of $173,678 from the Criminal Justice Coordination Council for the continuation of the Aggressive Replacement Training, ART, and Functional Family Therapy for fiscal year 2016, and also resolution approving equipment shown in Exhibit A as surplus property and authorized disposal of surplus property. If somebody would move to accept the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Motion from District 5. Second District 3. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Next, we have a resolution providing for the levy and collection of an annual ad valorem tax to provide funding, funds for the payment of the principal and the interest of $13,980 in principal amount of the Henry County School District general obligation refunding bonds. Attorney A.J. Wilkes will present this. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The voters of Henry County approved a bond issue for the improvement of the school system in 2007. We now have an opportunity to refund a portion of those bonds in the number of $13,980,000 as a result of the reduction in interest rates that we will obtain. We'll save the taxpayers a little over $1.2 million after payment of cost. In order for us to do this, we have to renew the resolution previously adopted by this board to levy property taxes for the payment of those bonds. It's the Board of Education's recommendation to you that you approve the resolution. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? We have a motion from District 2 to approve. Second District, I'm gonna yield the floor to 5, because I think his finger went up before 3. So we have a motion by District 2, second by District 5. Any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have consideration of resolution in support for the Henry County Board of Commissioners for Southern Crescent Technical College. Sherri Matthews, good morning.
Good morning, chair and board members. As Sherman Smith has indicated, we have a resolution before you this morning demonstrating the Henry County Board of Commissioners' support of the second building for the Southern Crescent Technical College. I think behind me, I have board members from the Chamber of Commerce who are standing in support of this resolution. Also, just to make you all aware, the chamber's board has already adopted a similar resolution. In June 2014, as you all are aware, the Southern Crescent Technical College opened its Henry County campus in McDonough. And reportedly, based on their numbers, approximately 25% of the total student population of nearly 8,000 students are residents who reside here in Henry County. In August of this year, the Technical College System of Georgia Facilities Committee will be meeting, and during that meeting, what they will do is determine what the priorities are for the upcoming fiscal year. The chamber, being very proactive, wants to get in front of that committee and make them aware that this is still a continual priority for the county, and also for the Chamber of Commerce, which is why they are here before you this morning, asking for you all to adopt this resolution in support of the technical college. As you all know, we do have $5 million that have been allocated through our current SPOLOSP 4 program, and those funds will be available in 2017. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, or I'll yield the floor if the chamber has any additional comments.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution to support from the Henry County Board of Commissioners for Southern Crescent Technical College at Henry Campus. We have a motion, District 2. Second District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Next, we'll have a public hearing. ULDC-AM-15-02 ordinance to amend Table 2.03.03 of Chapter 2, Zoning District, Section 2.03.03 Non-Residential Land Use in Base Zoning Districts and Adding Section 4.03.32 to Chapter 4. Site Design Standards. Section 4.03.00 supplementary design standard for specified use regarding pawn shops. In addition, with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Dante Gibbs, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
I have a current client who owns a pawn shop here in Henry County, and I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this hearing.
Okay. We have Commissioner for District 4 just recused himself. He will leave the room. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the recent request of District 5 Commissioner Holmes, planning staff returns to the Board of Commissioners with recommendations regarding ULDC pawn shop regulations. With that being said, the current ULDC regulations for pawn shops are limited to Table 2.03.03 in Chapter 2, which simply permits pawn shops in the C2 General Commercial Zoning District, C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, and IAC Interchange Activity Center. On August 5th, 2014, planning staff presented to the Board of Commissioners findings from our research of surrounding jurisdictions pertaining to pawn shops, and planning staff recommended an ordinance limiting the number of pawn shops to a per-population number similar to surrounding jurisdictions. The Board of Commissioners then asked staff to look into adding a lottery in similarity to surrounding local jurisdictions and implementing a 90-day moratorium on pawn shops, only in unincorporated Henry County. That was effective August 5th, 2014, and concluded November 3rd, 2014. This allowed staff additional time to further research surrounding jurisdictions and make additional recommendations to amend the ULDC with respect to pawn shops. The jurisdictions that were researched included Clayton County, Cobb County, Cherokee County, Fayette County, the city of Marlborough, the city of McDonough, and the city of Stockbridge. In November of 2014, planning staff brought the ULDC amendment recommendations regarding pawn shops to the BOC, at which the ordinance failed due to a tight vote. There are currently seven active pawn shops in unincorporated Henry County, according to the Business Licensing Department. According to the Atlanta Regional Commission, unincorporated Henry County has an estimated population of 148,277. That is a number as of 2013. If divided equally, the number of pawn shops currently located in unincorporated Henry County each serve approximately 21,182 residents. If the following recommendation is approved by the Board of Commissioners, unincorporated Henry County would currently be at its maximum number of allowable pawn shops, which is seven. Planning staff makes the following recommendations. Amending Table 2.03.03 in Chapter 2 to designate pawn shops as supplemental. The new supplemental section of the ULDC will be Section 4.03.32 entitled Pawn Shops, and will read as follows. Pawn shops are permissible in the following zoning districts: C2 General Commercial, C3 Highway Commercial, and IAC Interchange Activity Center, and are subject to the following, to the supplemental standard set forth in this section. Number one, pawn shops licenses shall be limited to one per 21,182 population. Two, pawn shops shall be within one... Shall not be within 1,000 feet of a similar use. Three, no application for license to do business as a pawn shop shall be considered or approved, or a license issued where the total number of pawn shop licenses issued and in effect at the time of such application numbers at least one for each 21,182 residents, according to the latest officially and finally published annual population estimates by the Atlanta Regional Commission. Number four, if during this period, applications are received which exceed the number of newly available licenses, there shall be held a lottery administered by the Henry County Business License Department to determine the order in which the applications shall be processed. Thereafter, the application shall be processed in the order reflected in the results of the lottery. Once the proceedings of the applications has resulted in the issuance of licenses up to the limit contained in this chapter, the remaining applications shall be returned to the applicants unprocessed. And finally, the enforcement of the total number of pawn shops permitted in Henry County shall be maintained by the Henry County Business License Department in accordance with the process outlined in the licensing, license and taxation requirements in Chapter 3-3, Article 6 of the Henry County Code of Ordinances. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yes, sir. The other floor to District One.
Dante, you said in 2013, there was 148,000 citizens in unincorporated Henry County.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what the figures are now?
I can check, but usually those numbers are kind of delayed. They usually run previous year, so I can check what they are, see if they have any updated numbers.
According to the 21,000 population per pawn shop, then we're at our max now, correct?
Yes, sir.
But that's the numbers for 2013.
Yes, sir.
So it's a possibility that the numbers might change.
Potentially, a little.
Okay. Thank you.
Last year, we spoke about our neighbors, the number of pawn shops that were in the neighboring county, Clayton, to be specific, and we talked about them having somewhere between 36 and 40 pawn shops.
At last count, Clayton County had 36 pawn shops.
My concern is with the tremendous growth that Henry County is having again. I just saw something recently that showed that, you know, we're growing above the average as you compare it to the, you know, to the region. And my concern is, as we continue to grow, we're going to attract, we're going to attract that spillover into Henry County, and I think that's something we should defend, defend against because we know with pawn shops comes increased crime and decreased property values. And if Henry County is going to become that beacon on the hill that we want it to be, we have to put steps in place to ensure that we keep out those type of, that type of potential.
Anybody else have any comments at this time or questions? If not, what I'm going to do is open the floor up. I'm going to, based on past practice, 15 minutes for people against this proposal and 15 minutes for people for it. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to open the floor up for 15 minutes, and I would like for the ones that oppose this to be in sequence, and that way I can keep up with the time better. So I'm going to come to the podium, state your name, please, and I will give you a total of 15 minutes for each and everybody in the group that would like to speak. So having said that, the floor is open. Somebody would like to speak against the board approving this? Okay, see you none. I'm going to expire that. Next, I would open the floor for 15 minutes for people that is in favor of the board approving this resolution.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm Elton Alexander with Because We Care, Henry County, Atlanta South. I come to here today to implore you to pass this resolution because we have seen overwhelming support, because we want our community to be a quality community. We've seen the bleed over, as Commissioner Holmes just mentioned. North Henry is littered with it. We do not want to put these businesses out of business. We just don't want to want on every corner. It is, welcomes people to our community coming down I-75 and driving down that corridor. That's just not what we want to see. We've seen these businesses affect property values in areas and in the areas that they're in, in Henry County. We've seen these businesses bring crime to our area. We've seen that these businesses act as a exchange almost for the crime element to get rid of the products that they pilfer from citizens' homes. That's not something that we want to be known for in this county. We want to be a county of distinction. A county of distinction meaning that we want to be that community, the shining light on the hill to recommending Atlanta's New South. A new day, a new time, rebranding our area. We, as I said again, do not have a problem with, you know, what we currently have, and we think that they have every right to exist in the community. But as far as the saturation of these pawn shops and payday loan, it is a eyesore in our community as you drive down some of our streets, where you see payday loan, loud signs, loud LED lights in the windows, actually just an eyesore in our community, bringing down property values. This is something that we want you all to take seriously and that we want you all to step in and set the standard right now, that Henry County is not going to be a dumping ground for pawn shops and payday loan establishments. Thank you.
I'm Toy Powell of 515 Angledwood Trace, Stockbridge, Georgia. I'm here to discuss the extremely popular pawn shop businesses we have in Henry County. I've been a resident of Henry County for 11 years. I was excited to move here after buying my house and graduating from college. At the beginning, it was just my husband and I, and we were enthusiastic about the area and the growth that was happening. But as time passed, we steadily waited and hoped for new businesses to come to Henry County. However, five years later, we had children, and still we hope for more family-friendly businesses. However, the major businesses that we noticed in our county were countless dollar stores, where my child can get a toxic toy, or a ridiculous amount of fast food restaurants with unhealthy food, or a pawn shop where a criminal can get a weapon to hurt my family or others in the community, and we need positive growth in Henry County. There needs to be a limit on pawn shops, check cashing places, or any type of unappealing business from taking over. I do not have a problem with the businesses, but we just want to prevent a problem before it happens. We must set a standard for other counties, we must set a standard that other counties have set forth, even more initiatives like these to keep our good residents in the county. Over the 11-plus years, we've noticed a lot of our neighbors have moved to other counties that have did similar things to this, which is limit pawn shops. And we just hope that you'll consider putting a limit in pawn shops in Henry County, and so me and myself and my husband and my family will try to stay. All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mindy Mayers. I live at 1008 Peaks Point in McDonough, Georgia, city limits of Stockbridge. I hope that you pass this resolution here to limit the pawn shops. I have been on different ends of this. I've been on the end of having my home robbed and my items being in pawn shops, so that has been very unfortunate, so I know the bad side of pawn shops. So I do hope that pawn shops are limited because I know what pawn shops are used for. Also, as a social worker who work with rehabilitating people, I know the bad side of pawn shops and what they are used for, from rehabilitating drug addicts, young people, homeless. I work with a lot of people, so I'm a social worker at the VA, and so in different places, I've been a social worker for about 20 years. So unfortunately, I just know the other side of pawn shops and what they are used for and what people do and what they do with their items at pawn shops. And so I just ask that, we just kind of look at limiting pawn shops because unfortunately, pawn shops aren't always, there isn't always a good side to what pawn shops are used for. So, and they are also an eyesore in the community, so I just ask that we look at that as well.
Chairman and Commissioner, my name is Kathy Gilbert, 120 Willow Hill Lane, Stockbridge, Georgia. When I was on the Stockbridge City Council, the city of Stockbridge had the foresight to understand that we could not allow pawn shops on every corner within our city limits. And so we established an ordinance to limit the number of pawn shops similar to what is being proposed here, based on population. And I believe that this is something that Henry County should do. You should follow the lead of those counties and jurisdictions that are taking the positive and proactive steps to present a, prevent a problem from blossoming and burgeoning in our community. Pawn shops, they are not the best type of business that we want to see in this county. They serve a purpose. There should be some allowed, but we don't need them springing up on every corner. You took appropriate action to limit and prevent the explosion of dollar stores just a few months back. I would urge you, please, please, to do what is right for the citizens of this county and put a limit on these types of business as proposed in this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Good morning, sir. My name is Bishop Brier. I live at 111 Barrington Parkway, Stockbridge, Georgia. I come in support of this action that you want to take. While we talk about economic development, it is the sustained contact actions of policies and makers of the community promoted for standards of living, economic health, and specific areas of villages, towns, and cities. Economic development may be also referred to as the quality and quantitative change in our economy. It helps us to develop regional competition, social inclusion, health, safety, and literacy, educational institutions growth, and other positive activities. I'm not saying that pawn shops are a negative activity, but when you have a proliferation of any organization that takes money and from the community, and as you've heard other speakers, I won't deal with the crime statistics and the things that happen, I do know that in Michigan State right now, there's a bill to amend the pawn shop laws and exceed population base. As population increases, it also looks at the pawn shops, so I think you need to add that to the resolution so that as we grow, we don't put room there so they can come in. In fact, when I was looking at some of the evidence here, it seems that there's a key supporter of select management, called select management resources, that is an Alpharetta that supports the proliferation of pawn shops. And I was able to validate that by calling the state legislator I know in Michigan. So we even have people that live here that want to see more pawn shops, and there are different qualities. You have one like the large one, the American Cash Pawn Shop, and the National Pawn Shop Association admits itself that there are different sizes and different types of pawn shops. And so we have to take care to look at those and do background checks on the organizations that own these pawn shops as well. So I stand this morning and say that we need to have positive businesses come into our community that will give a plus-plus to what we see. And we keep saying that we do not want our community to deteriorate, and we don't want people to run from us. We want them to come to us in Henry County.
Gordon Gilbert, 120 Willow Hill Lane, Stockbridge. For all the reasons previously stated, I would strongly encourage the Board of Commissioners to approve this ordinance to limit the number of pawn shops and that type of businesses in Henry County.
Steve Cash, Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth, 2000 Flat Rock Road, Stockbridge, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, excuse me, and my Commissioner in District Five, we want to thank you. The Council for Quality Growth really thanks you for what you're doing. We want to thank Dante and his planning staff for what you've done. We want to thank Stockbridge for being proactive in doing what you've done. Very necessary thing, and we all, I think we all, we can't hide the fact that there are some issues with pawn shops. So the Henry Council for Quality Growth supports this 100%. I want to thank y'all for, and encourage you to vote for. Thank you so much.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time? Okay, I'm going to declare that the public comment session is completed, and I would open the floor up for any Commissioner that would have any comments or questions or consideration Sir?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
We have a motion from District Five.
Sir.
We have a second from District Three. Any further discussion? The discussion I got, since we talked about this several months ago, my thoughts have never changed. We in America. And I know that people have problems with different kind of businesses that come into America, but the deal is, I think the government has the right to do the criteria, do the rules and regulations, but as far as prohibiting selectively picking a type business that can come not only to Henry County but to other places in the United States, I think it's just totally unacceptable. So having said that, I would vote no for this. That way you know where I stand. So my thoughts have never changed, and I know we've got some Commissioners that have some different thoughts, but having said that, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you. Moving down to purchasing, resolution awarding the contract pricing for elevator inspection and maintenance service. Mr. Rod Gray.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item I have to present for you is a recommendation for the award of the inspection and maintenance services for non-shindler elevators as a unit price contract with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed upon annual extensions to Cone, who is the current elevator inspection maintenance supplier for the U.S. Communities contract, and my recommendation is to award this under the U.S. Communities contract.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for the applicant? If not, we have a resolution to book Board of Commissioners awarding contract pricing for elevator inspection and maintenance services. Have a motion, District Three. Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution requesting the issuance of a blanket purchase order for the purchase of unleaded fuel, and also, if you'll notice, there's going to be an amendment that is not only limited to unleaded fuel, but will be for diesel fuel as well, and Rod Gray will bring that up and be added to the resolution.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, I would request that the resolution as presented be amended to state unleaded and diesel fuel as the same vendor, under the same contract, and for the same dollar amount. Fleet maintenance purchases unleaded fuel and diesel fuel utilizing the Georgia statewide contract, and the current contract holder is Boswell Oil Company of Athens, Georgia. The request is to authorize the issuance of a blanket purchase order for an amount not to exceed $4 million to Boswell Oil Company for the purchase of unleaded and diesel fuel for fiscal year 2016.
Anybody have any comments or question? If not, we have a resolution to book. Resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners requesting the issuance of a blanket purchase order for the purchase of unleaded fuel and diesel fuel for fiscal year 2016. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion, District Three. Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next, we'll have a resolution requesting a road change name from West Pennola Road to West Village Parkway. Terry McMichael, and this does constitute a public hearing. Oh, did I miss one? I got you, I got you. Let's move down to transit. Sorry about that, Mr. Salter. Resolution awarding the contract to purchase scheduling and dispatching software for Revealing Software Incorporated. Sorry about that.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Henry County Transit Purchasing Apartments and on RFP for dispatching and scheduling software on behalf of Henry County Transit. The county received three RFP matching the required criteria. We then graded them our purchasing grade systems for RFPs, and the final result was Revealed Software. We will be using FTA for 307 funds, which is an 80/20 match. The cost of the initial software package is $128,500. The grant will pay $102,800, and the county match will be $25,700. We also included the next two years of annual support fees, which is $16,850 per year, for a total of $33,700. The grant will pay $26,960, and the county will match $6,740. Grant total of initial purchase will be $162,200. The grant will pay $129,760. The county match required will be $32,440.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Have a resolution in the, before you, awarding a bid for the purchase of dispatching and scheduling software program.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District Four.
Sir.
Second District Five. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to request the emergency replacement of the security system in the Administration Building. The current system is no longer operational and has exceeded its serviceable life. Contact is the sole source provider for this service in the amount of $36,756, and the funds are available in facilities maintenance budget.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Have a motion from District Two, a resolution to the Henry County Board of Commissioners for emergency replacement of burglar alarm system in Administration Building.
Second.
Have a second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, we'll have a public hearing. I had a big hour here, why I wouldn't miss the public hearing part. Resolution requesting a road name change from West Pinola Road to West Village Parkway. Terry.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. We are requesting to change the name of West Pinola Road to West Village Parkway, beginning at the Clayton County line, including the section that was realigned in Fairview Road and, of course, ending right there at Fairview Road. This is being requested by the Commission of Fifth District for public safety reasons and to better exemplify the kind of upscale district plan for the Fairview area and assist with the rebranding and marketing of the community to future businesses. Apartment Transportation has notified the affected property owners of the request by regular U.S. mail and placed a legal advertisement, daily herald. We also placed signs notifying the public as well. The Chairman said this is a public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any comments or questions? If not, I will open the floor up for 15 minutes. People with support of this, 15 minutes for people against it. So if you would, if you are against this proposal, come to the podium, state your name, and the group will have 15 minutes. Ms. Carolyn Ivy.
Name Parkway.
Are you?
I live in Stockbridge.
Yes, ma'am. If you're against this, now would be the time for you to speak, and you have, the group will have 15 minutes.
I didn't, I heard y'all mention it.
Yes, ma'am.
To begin with, I didn't, I didn't receive anything.
Yes, ma'am. So if you'll get to the speaker, just state your name.
I can hear y'all halfway.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's why I have hearing aids in. I can't hear them either.
This fell off. My name, my name is Brenda Beasley. I live 3984 West Pinola Road in Ellenwood, Georgia. I just received this letter about a week ago about the proper change, and I'm opposed to it because of all the addresses, we'd have all the trouble we had to go through to change all, everything I have. There was a couple of neighbors that would fall in that group beside me, but they were coming with me, but they had, his wife had a doctor appointment, so they couldn't been able to come. And I don't know how many people are here that live in that area, but it's, I oppose it because it's, if they're going to have, if we're going to have to change our address to that same thing. I'm not opposed for the village, you know, but if we have to, if it means we have to change our address, I am opposed. I don't see why we can't leave our address the same as we have it, and they can call it whatever they want to, but I'm opposed to having to change a lot of information just to suit them. So that's my, that's, okay. And I'm, I can, I'm going to tell y'all, I can half, half hear y'all talking up there. Can't even tell what you're talking about hardly. See, I'm on the front row here, and a lot of the people that gets, just get up, it's talking here, I can't hardly understand them. You have a microphone, but you're not, you turn your head and, you know, I can't understand you. I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to be recognized to speak against this? I'm going to let that portion of the public hearing expire. So now we will open the floor for 15 minutes. Anybody that's in favor of this name change, if you would, come to the podium and state your name. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to call my name as a reason I was being quiet. My name's Carol Ivy, and I live on West Pinola Road. We've been out there close to 60 years, and I really can't see any major need in changing it. It's not a safety hazard, as someone said. I don't know what all they're putting on doing, but it's going to be a lot of trouble for the people that's been living on that road for all these years to change their bank statements and their mailing address and everything else. And I really don't think it's in the best interest of the people on West Pinola Road to change it. They keep talking about Ellenwood Village, and Ellenwood Village is on Amble Block up there at Wilmar. And I don't know why they want to change all these things. I don't understand it, but I do appreciate you letting me speak to you and tell you how I feel about it, and I don't think it's in the best of the community. And I thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This was actually a recommendation by both staff and public safety. This wasn't my idea. I was contacted by staff because public safety, police, and fire were having difficulties because of the new road that was cut through the middle of the Nidas project. And so it was their request to change the name, not mine, because of public safety and their ability to respond. And Sherri, did you have anything else to add to that?
Does anybody have any questions?
Did anybody like to speak in favor of this?
I think you already asked that.
Okay. If not, I'm going to declare that the public hearing segment is over. Now I'll take comments from the board or questions. That'll be, that'll work.
This is the list. I see you've got a tax map, or tax records here. Is this all the residents that will be affected by the road change?
Yes, sir, except I think the top one was scratched out, but all the rest of them, I believe, were a list of the residents that would be affected by that.
And what about businesses? I see we have Parker Brothers and a couple other ones.
No, sir. That...
The reason why we selected to change this portion of West Pinola Road and not the other portion, because there are a number of businesses on the other portion that would cost us a lot more money versus...
We include that, begins at Lake Down Line, and this is the new section that we built that was unnamed. So this section of the road had to be named, and the road flows like this now. From here all the way to East Atlanta will remain West Pinola Road, and Parker Brothers, as you suggested, is in that section, and it will not be changed.
Yeah, it's just down here on the list. That's what I saw. And it sounds like a very similar situation to what I had in my district. So it's unfortunate, but I understand from the public safety point of view. So that's all I have.
Any further questions? Comments? We have a resolution requesting a road name change from West Pinola Road to West Village Parkway. Have a motion District Five. Second District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Right hand. So move. Thank you so much. Resolution awarding a bid for the construction of reinforced concrete aprons for a double nine-by-five-foot precast cover system for steel drive. Terry.
Yes, sir. The county DOT has placed a double-nine-by-five precast box cover in place on Steel Drive at Lake Cindy. Our next step of operation is completing the job by installing two aprons on the, one on the inlet, one on the outlet end. The aprons will do two functions. First, they will serve as a foundation for the concrete wing walls that will attach to the apron and to the box at each end of the four corners, obviously holding up the dirt that will slope back toward the lake. Secondly, they serve as an erosion control measure that prevents scour. This is scour at the end of the boxes where the water comes through. In addition, the inlet apron will have a wall that extends across the outside edge between the wing walls that will act as a control structure to keep the pond elevation consistent of what it is today on the inlet side. After the aprons are complete, the wing walls will be set by the county DOT, and the cover will be backfilled, then the road can be opened back up. This request was sent through the purchasing department. We had two vendors respond. We recommend award to North Georgia Concrete in the amount of $32,900. Funds are available in the DOT slash Stormwater section of our budget.
Any questions or comments from Mr. McMichael? If not, we have a request award for the construction of reinforced concrete aprons for the double-nine-foot by five-foot precast box cover system on steel drive. Somebody move in that direction. That's the District Two project.
So move.
So move. Have a motion District One, Second District Two. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution approving the purchase of lighting for SR-20 Eastlake Road Roundabout. Terry.
Henry County signed a lighting agreement, Resolution Number 14-242, agreeing to maintain and pay the energy costs for lighting at the roundabout to be constructed at State Route 20 and Eastlake Road. Snap and Show's EMC provided an estimate of $39,735.39 as one form, or they would charge a monthly fee of $482.10 for 120 months for a total purchase price of $57,852. The monthly maintenance would be $86.38, and the energy cost would be $32.02 per month, regardless of which option we chose. The quote is for four 85-watt LED floods, four 104-watt LED floods, four 140-watt LED floods, and one 123-watt LED flood in 13 fiberglass poles. Staff recommends that we do the upfront purchase option of $39,735.39. The funds to pay for this will be provided in the streetlight fund inside of the DOT budget.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Not, we have a resolution, purchase of lighting for SR-20 Flint Eastlake Road Roundabout. Have a motion District Three. Second District Four. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, Chairman.
We're moving down to Splus, resolution approving a proposal and design of Turner Church Road. Mr. Romero. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and the board members. Splus IV was approved by voters in November 2013. Turner Church is an approved District Three Splus IV project. Pond Company started the design of Turner Church Road in 2003 as part of the Splus II program, and the project was put on hold. Pond and Company has provided a proposal in the amount of $44,490 to complete the construction plans, including updating the topographic and property survey, construction, and roadway plans for Turner Church from east of the bridge to State Route 20. Funding for the design is available in the project budget. Staff recommends approval of the proposal in the amount of $44,490 to Pond and Company to update the design for Turner Church Road.
Anybody have any comments or question?
Go ahead.
How you on the floor in District Four?
Rocky, the question I have, I see in proposal where they're going to do updated topo and property. What's changed out there as far as topo?
Well, the original Pond and Company, the surveyor who did the original survey has been out of business. We also have to do some utilities relocation. There's some new water lines on the area, so we're going to have to pick up that information as well. Property owners probably most likely have changed since it's been over 10 years. So all those additional things that we'll have to do.
You know, the property owners may have changed, but the property lines will still be the same. It's just a matter...
That's correct. The property line is still the same. Correct.
Checking court records. You've been over this, though? It just seems a little, I hadn't seen where the plans are at, how far they are, but that just seems a little high to me, to be honest with you.
They only went up to preliminary plans on this. We never finalized the plan, so we're looking at, this is about a mile-long road. Erosion is a big part of the plans, of course, since 2003, there's been a lot of changes on erosion. Plans are much bigger. There's more information we've got to provide. So that's, that's a big, big item, as well as trying to get a permit through the state. We're going to tie into the State Route 20, so additional work, additional survey may be needed. There's kind of a blind spot out there on State Route 20, so we're going to have to look into that as well, because we're going to have to realign Turner Church.
Right. Okay. Yeah. Basing that on the new MPDES requirements, I'm okay with that, but I'm still a little concerned with the price, but I understand where they're coming from on that. Since the new year, we've got some new erosion control standards, so that's all I have.
Rocky, I had a conversation with the mayor and some of the council persons as it relates to this project, and they've got an eight-inch water main on the existing Turner Church, and I asked them about funding the relocation of that, and I think they would be receptive to that if you'll have that conversation with them. I think that you could work through that.
That'd be great. Thank you, sir.
Any further comments or questions? Have a resolution in Henry County. Board of Commissioners approving a proposal for a design of Turner Church Road.
So move.
Have a motion District Three.
Second.
Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution approving a bid award for engineering design service for McDonough Parkway at SR-20.
Yes, Splus IV was approved by the voters again November 2013. McDonough Parkway at State Route 20 is an approved District One Splus IV project. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms for Splus Fund of Transportation projects intersections, including sidewalks, bid number 15-64 for the design services of McDonough Parkway at State Route 20. Four seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. A traffic study will be conducted at this intersection to determine whether a roundabout or a traffic signal will be the best type of improvement at this intersection. The design will also include a new alignment segment to tie into Henry Connector. The lowest bid is $202,300 from Heath and Lineback Engineers. Staff recommends award of the bid to the design services McDonough Parkway at State Route 20 to Heath and Lineback Engineers in the amount of $202,300.
Anybody have any comments or question? Yes, sir.
Rocky, did that design start where the pavement ends, McDonough Parkway, all the way to 2081?
Correct. The, the project starts right here at the end of Henry Connector, which is where, just right behind us, and it actually goes through the DOT and Stonewater Shops where they have all their parks and equipment. Of course, we'll have to relocate that, and it goes, ties in just left, depending on where you're looking, just to the side of the DOT right in front of the BP station.
So it's going to line back up about where that bank is now?
Correct. It's going to line where the new, where the existing McDonough Parkway is located currently.
I believe that's a lot better price than we hadn't got before.
Yes, sir. It definitely did. Was much better.
I appreciate you working on that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any more comments or question? Have a resolution in Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for engineering design service for the McDonough Parkway at SR-20. Have a motion District One, Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution approving a bid award... Resolution approved any bid award for engineering design service for East Atlanta Road and Thurman Road Flat Rock, Rocky.
East Atlanta at Thurman Flat Rock Road is an approved District Five Splot four project. The purchasing department issued an invitation bid for shortlisted firms for Splot-funded transportation project intersections, including sidewalks, bid number fifteen dash sixty-five for the design services of East Atlanta Road at Thurman Road Flat Rock Road. Five seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. A traffic study will be conducted at these intersections to determine whether a roundabout or a traffic signal will be the best type of improvement at the intersections. The low bid is a hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars from Wolverton and Associates. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the design services of East Atlanta at Thurman Road Flat Rock Road to Wolverton Associates in the amount up to one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Rocky, I just noticed a resolution that we're considering a roundabout. I'm not sure if I support a roundabout at that location. Number one, because, you know, we don't maintain them well, and, you know, the roundabout in Fairview one fifty-five, to me, is an eyesore, and to put a roundabout in that particular area with all those nice homes, is gonna bring down that area, bring down the property value, so I don't, I don't wanna consider a roundabout in that particular location.
We'll do a traffic study. It could be just adding lanes, right now, it's just, there's no turn lanes, so it's gonna be an intersection improvement-
Correct.
-of some type. Once we do the traffic counts and we do the traffic study, then we will be able to determine which is the best, and of course, we'll come back to you and mention to you the information we're getting.
Any further comments or question? Have a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for engineering design service for East Atlanta Road at Thurman Road Slant Flat Rock Road. Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approved any bid award for engineering design services for Amalee Road and Thoroughbred Road. Rocky, good evening.
Yes, Chairman. Amalee Road at Thurman Road are approved District Two Splot four projects. The purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for shortlisted firms, Splot-funded projects, dirt roads. Bid number fifteen dash sixty-six for the design services of Amalee Road and Thoroughbred Road. Five seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is sixty-seven thousand twenty-nine dollars from Wolverton and Associates. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the design services for both Amalee and Thoroughbred Road to Wolverton and Associates in the amount of sixty-seven thousand twenty-nine dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to approve a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for engineering design service at Lake Amalee Road and Thoroughbred Road. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second, District Five, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution approved any bid award for engineering service design for bridges and coverage repair located in District Two.
Yes, Chairman, we have four bridges or culverts that we bundled together. Those are Hampton over Indian Creek, which is a culvert repair, Hampton over Talawaka River Bridge, which is a bridge repair, Jonesboro Road over Walnut Creek, which is a bridge repair, and All Highway Three over North Fort Southern Railroad, which is a bridge repair. All these projects are located in District Two and are Splot four projects. Purchasing department issued an invitation to bid for the shortlisted firms from Splot-funded transportation projects, bridges, bid number fifteen dash sixty-seven for the design services of bridges and culvert repairs located in District Two. Three seal bids were received and reviewed. Funding for the design services is available in the project budget. The lowest bid is thirty-two thousand dollars from AECOM Technical Services. Staff recommends awarding the bid for the design services of bridges and culvert repairs located in District Two to AECOM Technical Services in the amount of thirty-two thousand.
Have a motion District Two to approve.
Second.
Second from District Three, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, sir.
Resolute to rescind Resolution Number five point two-two-one and to approve the purchase of police vehicle equipment for fifteen twenty fifteen Dodge Chargers for the Henry County Police Department using Splot four funds. Good evening, Mr. Perkoff.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Resolution Number fifteen dash two-two-one was approved by the board on June sixteenth, twenty fifteen. There's a need to rescind Resolution Number fifteen dash two-two-one due to an incorrect vendor name. The Henry County Splot Department requested quotes from the purchasing department for police patrol vehicle equipment for fifteen new Dodge Chargers, and the quotes are provided below. Fifteen Panasonic Tupperware computers from CDWG using a GSA contract in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Fifteen radar systems from Decatur Electronics using a GSA contract in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents. Fifteen ProLaser four LiDAR units from Lakota Contracting using a GSA contract in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Fifteen mobile radio packages from Loudon Communications using a GSA contract in the amount of fifty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. And fifteen WatchGuard in-car video packages from Computec International using a GSA contract in the amount of seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars. The Splot Department is requesting authorization to use Splot four funds to purchase the above-listed equipment for the remaining fifteen new police patrol vehicles, and using GSA state contracts for a total amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-five cents. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Before we have a motion, I would like to read the correct resolution. I just quoted one off of the agenda, which is incorrect, the number. So the correct resolution, which is correct in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners rescinding Resolution Number fifteen dash two-two-one and approving the purchase of police vehicle equipment for fifteen twenty fifteen Dodge Chargers for the Henry County Police Department using Splot four funds. Somebody move to approve.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four, Second District One, any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for May the nineteenth, twenty fifteen, is published. If somebody would move in that direction or to amend them, or whatever would be necessary. We have a motion from District Three to approve.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion, hold in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Now, we have a chairman and commission comments. The chairman has no comments. I yield the floor, any commissioners would like to make a comment at this time. The floor recognizes District One.
I'd like to take a minute and thank some of our public safety employees. My wife was involved in a minor auto accident two and a half weeks ago, and I'd like to recognize Chief Brad Johnson, Chef Commander Tom Gardner, Battalion Chief Luther Phillips, firefighter, paramedic Matthew Buckannon, and firefighter EMT Paul Lines, and also Officer Oliver with the City of McDonough Police. I'd just like to thank them for a good job, not just for my wife, but for all the citizens of Henry County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be recognized? County manager, would you have any comments at this time?
Yes, sir, I actually have two comments, Mr. Chairman. The first comment is I want to personally commend our Splot and purchasing department for moving a lot of the Splot projects that you all have voted on during this public meeting and during previous public meetings. As you all can see, we're already seeing the dividends in reference to our own call, engineering services, so I just want to publicly thank both of those departments for moving projects and continuing to produce what the citizens have voted on in terms of our Splot program. Secondly, during the meeting of June sixteenth, you all were made aware that the service delivery strategy for police services for the city of Stockbridge was set to expire. During that meeting, you all, there was a lengthy conversation, at the end of the meeting, you all decided to extend the SDS, but asked that myself and Michael Harris, City Manager for the city of Stockbridge, communicate with each other to see if we could come to some resolution on the actual cost of providing police services for the city of Stockbridge. Over the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of conversation between myself and Michael and with you all as well in terms of defining what that level of service is for the city and what level of service we provide through our Henry County PD Department. The county still stands behind that we offer the same service to the city of Stockbridge residents that we offer to those residents of the unincorporated areas. What I have before you all is a resolution ratifying and authorizing an intergovernmental agreement regarding police services for the city of Stockbridge. What the resolution indicates is that we will continue to provide the same level of service, or higher level of police service, that we have offered, but we're also asking that beginning in January, beginning on January first, twenty sixteen, the city shall pay to the county an annual sum of nine hundred thousand dollars for those said services. The said sum shall be paid in four equal quarterly installments in each quarter thereafter. The agreement also stipulates that this is for a three-year term, and it will expire on December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any comments?
Chairman, I appreciate you working on this, and I know you've had many talks with Michael Harris, and I appreciate Michael working with you, and I think we've made some positive movements from what I hear of the last couple of weeks, that, you know, some things are moving. I like your proposal, you know, we, at the county, we were hoping to get quite a bit more, and I think that the city was hoping to pay quite a bit less, so I think us moving both toward the middle, it's a compromise on our part, it's a compromise on their part, and I see it as a win-win on both sides. And like I say, I appreciate everything you've done, and of course, the mayor and city council, city of Stockbridge, I appreciate them working with us. But let's run through this, if we do approve this, and then the city does not agree to these terms, where do we go from there? And I may yield the floor over to the, sorry, Chairman, to the attorney to take us through what exactly will happen.
If the agreement expires and we no longer have a written contract to provide police services, the police department will have to change the manner in which it serves in the city. It will no longer serve as, sort of as a substitute for the city police department, but there's still police officers, they can still do their job. If a police officer, in fact, a police officer anywhere observes a crime, he can make an arrest and issue citations and do all of those things. It would seem to me that the only real significant change would be that if tickets are issued or arrests made for misdemeanors, they wouldn't have to go to the city municipal court, they could then go to state court. The police department may change the way in which it patrols, but that's gonna be up to the management to make that decision. Otherwise, you know, the things don't have to change that dramatically otherwise, so...
Do we have any comments? City of Stockbridge governing body would favor this new agreement?
There are representatives available in the audience from the city of Stockbridge, and I'll yield the floor for their comments.
So they're agreeable, basically, to what you just stated, and I think we're gonna yield the floor to the city of Stockbridge. Does anybody have a problem if we yield the floor to the city of Stockbridge? Okay, I yield the floor.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first of all, I need to bring to the attention of the county attorney that there's a specific statute that says that if a citation is issued for a traffic violation or for an ordinance violation, the city of Stockbridge, the law requires that that citation go to the city court. If there's any action taken by the county to divert those tickets to the state court, of course, appropriate legal action will be taken. Second of all is, this issue came up several years ago. We directed our attention directly to the solicitor general of Henry County. He agreed that we were right on the law, and I would suggest that you have a deep conversation with Mr. Pippen before you start with such actions. As far as the proposal that has been made, the city of Stockbridge expects full and complete police services to be provided. We are under an SDS agreement. The law is specific. If you cannot reach an agreement, you're required to go to mandatory mediation. If the board, if this board does not agree to go to mandatory mediation, then we'll have to seek the relief of the court. We don't wanna do that. We've been trying to negotiate this matter in good faith. We have asked commissioners, sitting right there, face to face, to give us the documentation that you have to substantuate why the citizens of Stockbridge should have to pay twenty-five percent higher rate for police services than someone in the unincorporated area. To date, y'all have yet to provide one single document to substantiate it. Now, if you have documentation to substantuate nine hundred thousand dollars, we'll look at it. We'll do it, we'll respond back to you appropriately, but to have you or anyone else to try to dictate that this is what we're gonna do, it's not right. What would, how would you feel if the city of Stockbridge came in here and told you what to do? Y'all have served on councils, y'all serve businesses, you understand that, it's just not the way you do business. Now, we're willing to sit down with you right now, we are willing to sit down with you at any time, but we would want your people to prepare documentation just as we have, and Chairman Smith will back me up on this. I provided actual documentation, actual figures showing the exact amount of money the taxpayers in this county, in the city, were paying, and remember, the taxpayers of Stockbridge are residents of Henry County and taxpayers of Henry County. To date, we have yet to have a response showing us why our numbers are wrong. We're entitled to that. We're entitled to that, and the city is prepared to pay that. We need for you to understand explicitly that we must have an agreement that would go through this existing Splot, this existing Splot, and into the year in which the Splot, the next Splot will become available. That is the only way that the citizens of Stockbridge can generate any money to provide any kind of police service. It's that simple. And you have been elected to protect them, and they can be protected by you continuing the contract, negotiating correctly with us, and agreeing that the contract has to go through the existing Splot and the year in which the next Splot comes available. That gives us time to develop our budgets, to decide what we're going to do. If we got to open up our own police department, we'd be prepared to do it. We can't do it today. It would be unable to do it today. You know, I've been doing this forty-six years, forty-six years, and I've reached an agreement with every single board of commissioners, and we reached a fair agreement every single time. And those that got a little gray hair up there will know that we had agreements way before SDS ever came effective, before they even thought of it. Henry County was ahead of everybody else in reaching agreements between cities and counties to save tax money. If you look at Stockbridge, Stockbridge started in January of nineteen seventy-two, entering into agreements with Henry County that saved the taxpayers money. And we can do it again if we simply work together. Mr. Harris.
Chairman, I would just add that, over the course of the last couple of weeks, since we received a letter from the county attorney regarding this date and the deadline set and the ultimatum set for this date, we have, I think we've made tremendous strides, myself and Ms. Matthews, in working towards some type of resolution. I don't think we're very far from a resolution at this point. But what was proposed a few moments ago is not the same that was recently discussed between myself and Ms. Matthews, so at this point, the city has not had an opportunity to vet any of the details or specifics of what's being proposed, so certainly, we would ask for time to go through, continue through the process of negotiating- So certainly, we would ask for time to go through, continue through the process of negotiating. Again, again, I think we've made tremendous strides even in the course of the last few hours of coming close to a resolution. As Mr. Welch has mentioned, simply from, back to the beginning when this process began, we simply asked for documentation to substantiate what the county was requesting. You know, I liken it to, in some cases, a change order request on a project. I've been here before in previous life, you know, where I have staff sit up here and bring forward a change order request, you know, and certainly, the duty and fiduciary duty behind the elected officials was to ask what that involved. We're simply asking the same thing, you know, to find out what is involved, what makes up the request. Again, the initial request that the city received was for a 200% increase. You know, and from that point forward, we'd only ask for numbers to justify that. I think we've gotten to a point where now, we are, we have something that's, that certainly from the city's standpoint, we think would be fair and equitable, and we think we're close to having something along those lines with the, from the county's perspective as well. But again, before the county asks the city to sign a resolution or to agree to a resolution that we haven't had an opportunity to look through, we simply ask for more time to be able to go through, finalize this process, or at the very least, agree to mediation. So we can get some resolution behind this once and for, once and for all.
We would request that you amend your resolution to state specifically that the existing contract will continue in full force and effect until your meeting in August. And that you direct your staff to provide us with specific documentation to justify their request for $900,000. And that the county manager and the city manager review that information and that documentation, that we be allowed to ask questions and get responses from your department heads concerning this and how they did the calculations and the basis of it. And that the county give to us a written document saying specifically what services they will provide for the requested funds. And I think that is a very, very reasonable way to resolve this and give us time to get it, to get it done. And I'd make that request of you.
Just from my comments, as you well know, Mr. Welch, you and I, and the other cities, was the first ones to negotiate the official House Bill 49, as we call it, SDS is, we didn't make reference to later. It sounded a little more sophisticated than House Bill 49. But we spent a lot of time with the county and their lawyer, and I told you this once before, I liked you, I liked you better when we was on the same side, representing the four cities. But we came up with a formula that was, I'm going to, to us as be fair and equitable today, and we didn't use the full amount, like for an example now, 17 million that we fund the police department. Right now, I think the number is like 9 million, okay? The other part is funded by other sources and not property tax. So as you well know, the three cities in their, in their police department, they get a rollback on tax based on that formula. Stockbridge pays the full amount. They don't get the rollback because there's no computation and figures available. But I would favor, number one is, I'm familiar with the law you're stating and the law is very clear that the county cannot provide any services and it specifies these services in the code section. Police is one of them. So that means if our contract expires tonight, that we provide no service, period. Now, I can tell you, I may could go to jail on this, but I would authorize the police department to respond to a 911 call of a citizen of Stockbridge the same as we would a citizen in Ola, just that simple. Now, the, the level of service obviously wouldn't, we couldn't fix all this overnight, we couldn't shuffle policemen and all that, but I'm saying that, that you are correct. The citizens of Stockbridge are not only taxpayers, they are citizens of Stockbridge and also citizens of Henry County and also our constituents. So to let the contract expire thinking we're going to terminate services, I don't see that happening on my watch. But having said that, I favor exactly what council said and let's get this resolved. That's my thoughts. Yes, sir.
Kind of chime in here. My understanding was if we let the SDS agree to dissolve, that we would still be providing service in the city of Stockbridge. We will not leave the city of Stockbridge unpoliced. It's just the manner in what we police.
There is a statute precisely, it's actually the constitutional provision that says precisely what the chairman says, which is, no county or municipality can provide services outside its geographical boundary absent a written agreement. But there's also law that allows police officers to police wherever they find themselves. So there's not going to be a situation where the police officer has to stop at the city limits, turn around and drive away. That's, that's not going to happen. What happens is, the police officers, just like anybody else, can drive their cars wherever they see fit. And if a police officer observes a crime anywhere, he can make an arrest. If there's an arrest warrant issued, that arrest warrant is issued to every police officer in the state of Georgia. Every sheriff's deputy, every police officer, every, every law enforcement person and any law enforcement person can execute a search warrant or an arrest warrant. Police officers aren't prohibited from investigating crimes wherever they may find themselves. I'm quite certain the police chief would tell you they have officers that go all over the state, maybe all over the country, investigating crimes. There's no real limitation on where a police officer is a police officer. Once, once they take that oath and put that badge on there, they're cops and they're always cops. But it's, from a practical, everyday standpoint, you're not going to look at a shutdown of police services. It may be a change in the manner in which those services are provided, but it's not going to be a shutdown of police services. It just wouldn't happen. I don't think, I don't think regardless of what the board directed, I don't know that the chief and his people would walk away from the city of Stockbridge. I, I think that's probably contrary to the heart and soul of every police officer. So we're not looking at a situation where starting at midnight tonight, there will be no police presence, no law enforcement presence within the city of Stockbridge, where I don't think anybody contemplates that's what's going to happen.
You adopted a resolution that says that specifically, okay? And I have given this board a reasonable way to resolve this matter. Just extend the contract until that time and give these people the opportunity to resolve it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I think this is a win for Stockbridge. We've come down from a high of $2 million to $900,000. You mentioned Stockbridge moving forward with getting their own police force, putting, putting that in play. And being the largest city in Henry County, they should start moving in that direction. And so I think the three years gives you guys that ability to start planning, to put, to create your own police force. But this is, this is, this is a great deal for the city. I think we're prepared to vote on this agreement today and put the ball in your court to make a decision on how you want to protect your citizens and our citizens.
Commissioner, I think it's a step in the right direction, but again, as Mr. Welch mentioned earlier, you know, it would need to extend at the very least to our next splosh cycle.
Let me make sure that it's clear to you and each member of this board. Your offer is not acceptable to the city of Stockbridge. If you adopt that resolution without an amendment, you're placing us in a position to have to take other action that we don't want to do, but we will not be bullied.
I yield a floor to District 3.
I think we've made great strides in the last couple of weeks. I commend you, Sherri and Michael. But I think we need some more time on this issue. We got to make sure we get this thing right. And I would favor us postponing this decision till we can get all parties together and get some kind of an agreement. If we can't reach an agreement, then I would favor mediation.
The law requires mediation. DCA has also told your attorney and told you that the existing agreements, including this agreement, remains in effect until January 1, 2017. Now, that's the enforcement agency of the state of Georgia that is charged with this. Let's stop, let's stop arguing, folks. Let's do something right and move on.
I yield a floor to District 2.
I was going to ask if the county clerk had written down those amendments to, were those written down? Did anybody make note of what, Mr. Welch?
Will you say the ones that Mr. Welch asked for?
Did anybody write those down? Buddy, if you would repeat those, I'd encourage us to, I wanted to ask our county attorney a question after that.
First of all, I would request that your resolution, the last resolution of June, one, be revoked. Two, that the record be made clear that the existing police service contract with the city will remain in full force and effect until your meeting in August, your first meeting in August, for the sole purpose of giving the representatives an opportunity to complete a settlement agreement. That there would be no effort made by the county to divert traffic citations and code enforcement requirements of the city's ordinances to the state court of this county. That your department heads be directed to provide in writing the method that they use the $900,000 requested by the county. And that we be allowed to discuss this matter with your department heads to get this, this matter settled. That's my request on behalf of the city.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we may want to add, I'm going to jump in and anticipate your question of me. I'm going to recommend that we don't rescind the June resolution, that we instead modified, if that's the direction the board wants to go into, to take these, these issues into account. I would suggest that rather than directing department heads, plural, to do anything, you simply direct the county manager to do this. We don't need more than one source of information. We need it all to be funneled through one person at the county. I would, I would recommend you direct-
That's acceptable.
-the county manager to do it. The last thing I would recommend, and this is in anticipation of, if we can't get this done, I would recommend that you go ahead and authorize me, together with Mr. Welch, to try to schedule a mediation with an appropriate mediator as soon after August, whatever the first meeting in August is, as is practical. I wouldn't suggest we do it the day after, but I would suggest as soon as it makes sense, given y'all's schedules, the lawyer's schedules, whoever we select as a mediator's schedule. If you choose to extend it, I would suggest you do it on those terms. Whether or not you choose to extend, it's up to you, but if we choose to extend, I would recommend that you do it on those terms. Look, whatever, whatever document Sherri's working off of would be, would be open, subject to an open records request, you might as well just save, let's save the trouble of doing all of that, let's just open that information up and-
That is also acceptable.
And, you know, as long as the agreement is in effect, the agreement specifically calls for tickets to be written to the city court, and if we're going to extend the agreement, that would continue. Now, how you vote from there is up to you, but if you vote, I would recommend you incorporate those ideas.
Yes, sir. I recognize District 4.
Mr. Welch mentioned a, I believe, a state statute that requires us to write tickets for the city while we're in the city regardless of the SDS. Are you aware of the statute?
He and I are going to respectfully disagree on that. He's absolutely right, county or city ordinance violations belong only in the city. The state court, no other court has jurisdiction over those but the city court. You know, we'll, that's just one of those things, we'll just have to respectfully disagree and we'll work it out. Lawyers have worked out bigger problems than that, and if we can't, that's why we have a court system. And I love a good fight, but I'd prefer to avoid a good fight if we can do it.
Well, I will say, I did speak to Trey Pipkins this morning about this issue and he didn't have an issue with it, with us sending our tickets to state court at this time. He said he could do it temporarily without adding new staff or anything like that for a few months till we get this thing straightened out.
I suspect Mr. Pippen needs to read the law before he makes anything in writing to this board, because I don't think a spirit court judge would allow him to do it. That's how well I feel about it.
I yield a floor to District 2.
I just wanted to ask, you know, since we had Patrick kind of clarify some of the requests of the city of Stockbridge, and they sounded to, from the discussion, that it was amenable. I mean, I wanted to ask Commissioner from District 4, I mean, because what I heard was essentially, the resolution, they're open to review it, they're just basically asking for a due diligence period. I mean, that's, that was the primary period thing I saw, so I didn't hear a no, which is a positive.
We said no to the- Proposal you made. We did not say no to the entire part. We got to see, we got to see your numbers. I tell you, you understand that you want to be able to see what people base their claims on. Just like when you issue a bid to do surveying work, engineering work, people want to see what you're bidding on. That's the same thing.
Say yes, it's no. I mean, it's, that's a harsh way of saying it, but until they say yes, the answer is no. And I don't know, I know Sherri and I spoke, I think we ended speaking probably around 8 o'clock last night. So assuming for the sake of argument that when Sherri and I got off the phone, she still had some work to do before she could formulate her proposal, but best case scenario was, that proposal probably originated around 8:30 or 9 o'clock last night. And, you know, is it, and I think it's, it's fair, I think, for the city to say, we don't know if we can say yes or no right now. And I think that's a reasonable-
And y'all understand, people as old as I am are in bed by that time, so.
To the commissioner's point, we are-
We're agreeable certainly to the resolution with the amendments that's proposed by Mr. Jockstetter as well. I mean, for those two additional points he added, city would be fine with.
But I would suggest that we stop this, you know, two-week, three-week extension. Several weeks ago, I made a suggestion that we, if we're going to extend it, let's extend it. Let's, let's make this for a number of months. I think we're past that point. I think we're at the point, we have to say, we are either going to be able to make an agreement within a month, or we're not going to be able to make an agreement without help. And that help comes in the form of either mediation, which is we, we get in a room with other people and we come to an agreement, or if we can't, a court. You know, that's, and I think we're at the point, we're either going to make that agreement or not. And that process is in the statute, the deals with service delivery strategies, it's a, and it's not that difficult of a process if you walk it through all its steps.
How can we accurately do due diligence when we're reviewing numbers from a 2012, their 2012 annual financial report? Do we have numbers for 13, 14?
We do not have numbers available from the city in terms of, because originally, the conversation was the amount of fines and forfeitures that were being received by the city. So we don't have any numbers available for 2013, but we do have the 2012 numbers.
So where are the 13, 14 numbers?
It's my understanding, Commissioner, that we provided numbers that date back, we gave averages based on figures from 2011, 12, 13, 14, and 15, and we provided some five-year averages, and those were the basis for the data that we provided.
See, the 2012 that we're, that you're referring to is part of their CAFER, which is their comprehensive annual financial report. One of the things that has continued to come up is the amount that the city receives in terms of fines and forfeitures. And what the county has requested is that we have the audited numbers in terms of what that actual number is. I think we've all heard various numbers thrown out, anywhere from $1 million to $1.2 million. I did request that information through our budget director to, through the city of Stockbridge, and we were deferred to Michael Harris, who did provide a response back to the county indicating that it's really not 1.2 million, it's about $300,000 to $400,000 that the city actually receives for fines and forfeitures. Keeping in mind, the fines include your code enforcement, your animal control, and a host of other fines that go into that one singular pot. So that was one thing that the county- So, that was one thing that the county wanted to get verification on. If you all recall, that was part of the initial options that Michael and I discussed. Because again, we were under the assumption that the city of Stockbridge was receiving about $1.2 million. So, the initial options that were proposed to the board at that time is that we would work with the city of Stockbridge in terms of keeping the annual cost to a minimum, but we would ask that they provide a portion of those fines and fees to the county. I believe we originally recommended 50%, and then we went back to 25%. That was not something that Michael nor his counsel could agree to, hence why we ended up at this point with the $900,000. I do want to also say that, again, Patrick and I did work last night to try to get to a final number and to look at the numbers that I had been provided. But the chief, our chief actually has made several presentations to Stockbridge City Council and made it very clear on the services that are being provided and provided a number to the city. So, that is something that I wanted the board to be made aware of, that Chief Nichols has made several presentations to Stockbridge City Council in terms of how he derived his number and how that number was established.
Can either of you chief, if he's prepared, to discuss the presentations that he's given to Stockbridge?
While the chief's coming up, I might suggest that maybe if there's information that Sherry needs, we've got the city here, tell them what you need, let's get them to agree to give you what you need so we can, so that flow of information can go both ways. If the averages don't work for you and you need more specific numbers, tell them and let's get it.
You understand that the extra money that the city provide, has been paying Henry County, is for services above what you provide someone in Ola. We've been paying for that extra service. We've also been providing, we spent two, almost $2.5 million on a building that y'all could move into and use as a precinct that you pay $1 per year for. It has an amortized value of $235,000 per year value to the county.
Just two quick points before the chief comes up. To clarify what Sherry said, you know, what is gross versus net as far as what we're actually collecting in fines and forfeitures, it is ballpark around that million dollars. It's difficult to discern out because we have to take out code enforcement and other items. So, but there's a number of fees that get paid out of those revenues that has not been taken into consideration, and that's where we come down to that $200,000 to $300,000 net net value behind that. And just quickly, as the chief is coming up, you know, it's been stated in the past that there was a concern from the city's standpoint with the level of services that we were being provided by the county, and that's never been an issue. I want to make sure we make that clear. In speaking with the mayor and the council members, the level of services that we're being provided by the county has never been an issue. We've always been completely thrilled about what they've done and how they've provided services for our citizens. So, that has never been a topic of concern amongst the city or the city staff.
What I would recommend before the chief comes up is take the language that the city of Stockbridge can live with, and take the language that the county attorney says it would represent and protect the county, and take those two, make it a resolution, and then also follow suit with the county attorney that if we can't reach an agreement at August the 4th, which would be our first meeting in August, then it automatically goes into arbitration. And that way, we, I think we're trying to negotiate in open forum here. And I don't think that's, it just keeps, it becomes heavier and heavier, and we get people coming up and speaking. So, if that's what the board wants, we can continue this. But I would suggest that we take the two council's recommendations, blend them into one resolution and move on. That's my recommendation.
That's our feeling, and we would agree to that.
Would you agree with that? Patrick, would you agree to that?
I think that would be a reasonable way to proceed if we're going to extend.
Okay, somebody wants to move in that direction?
Mr. Chairman, I would still like to- Chief Nichols presents his information to the board.
Okay, we'll accept that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One of the things that I would like to make perfectly clear is that we, as the Henry County Police Department, enjoy a good relationship with the city of Stockbridge. My men and women work very hard to keep that city safe, and I think we do a good job. Earlier, Patrick mentioned that we would probably stay up there regardless of what the financial situation is, and he's accurate. I mean, the folks that I have up there, they have a servant's heart. That's what they're up there for. Obviously, we've gotten to this point because people have to come up with a financial agreement. I have presented, as Sherry stated, I have presented three separate times to the council in the city of Stockbridge to explain to them what they get. Because if you look at the SDS agreement, it says two officers per shift, and I run three shifts up there, which is 24 hours a day, obviously. That entails a total of six officers. When I say full service, we have patrol officers that answer calls for 911. That's their primary job. If, say, something like a burglary takes place, then a detective would go out and investigate that, which the SDS agreement doesn't say anything about that other than a vague alluding to provide the same services to the citizens of unincorporated Henry County, which we would do. So, we don't handle anything any differently in the city of Stockbridge that we would in the unincorporated areas. Again, we have crime scene technicians that go out and process the scenes. We do a lot of different things that entails quite a bit of services that we provide. I'll allude to something we had happen about a month ago. We had a stabbing at the Waffle House inside the city limits. We probably had about eight or nine different officers and detectives in crime scene involved in that scenario. If you go back to the SDS agreement, it says two officers. Well, we had many more than that. We had detectives that ended up being involved with the further investigation in DeKalb County where a homicide occurred from the same individual that was the perpetrator in the stabbing. At the same time, we had an incident go down at the Veterans Clinic. So, we have a lot of officers that involve us. I've explained to the city of Stockbridge or made a presentation to the city. We actually have nine zones that touch parts of Stockbridge. We have two primary zones in the city, then seven that surround it. Over the years, there's been a lot of annexation of property. We actually have several areas, and I've spoken to this with Sherry, that are almost surrounded, unincorporated areas, that are almost surrounded by the city of Stockbridge. So, it's very unique and very difficult to, the way we have our zones crafted, to get all these ironed out that we've got one officer, two officers, three officers. But the money aspect is, again, it's rather difficult. But 15% of everything that happens in the county happens in the city of Stockbridge. That's an average, that's what the average that we've came up with. My budget is $18.5 million. We took 15% of that budget, which is $2.7 million. We backed the $1.2 million out of there from the rollback, which we came up with $1.5 million. That's approximate, and I think some other individuals, Fred came up with some numbers too that we've talked about, and also Sherry. The numbers with the fines, we've tried to look at the fines. We've used Stockbridge's own table for the different fines and the different citations, and I think we came up with about $1.7 million. So-
Talking traffic tickets?
Fines and forfeitures. In 2010, when I took over as chief, we didn't even have a way to find out if it was actually happening in the city or whether it was a Stockbridge mailing address. One of the things I directed then-Captain Going, now Major Going, to do was to hand tally everything that happens in the city of Stockbridge so we could get a more accurate picture, just for the specific negotiations in the SDS agreement. So, again, we enjoy the city of Stockbridge. I started my career out in the city of Stockbridge, so I hold it near and dear to me, and I've been up there and spoke with many of the citizens. We enjoy a good relationship with our citizens up there. But I also believe that my folks work hard up there. The actual verbiage of the current agreement doesn't really reflect or accurately reflect how we do business up there. And I think that's also reflected on the financial aspect of it.
Anybody else have any comments, District Two?
I'd just like to kind of say some things before hopefully somebody, you know, one of the commissioners from District Four or Five would make a resolution. But, you know, this is always a difficult thing when you in fight with your family members. I mean, it's interesting, you know, we've got Mr. Buddy Welch, we've got Michael Harris up here, and I see the city council and the mayor members sitting out there. I mean, this is family. I mean, if people don't know who are watching, Michael Harris for many years, I mean, he was our, he worked in the county. I mean, this is where made him who he is, and then Buddy, everybody knows Buddy. I mean, so it's one of those things where I think that, I say this for the benefit of the city council members as well as the mayor that's out there. I think the best negotiation process you can have is where everybody leaves the room ticked off at each other. Because that means that both parties probably had to give up something that they didn't want to give up. I can tell you from, you know, I'm not saying I'm an objective person, but I am. My district is outside of Stockbridge. There's some emotional stuff going on, I'm sure, on the city council with the mayor and the city council members, and there's emotional stuff that goes on with the commissioners. And I think Commissioner Prince in District Four said it best is that this, at least, we are finally at the point to where we think we ought to get a lot more, the city thinks they ought to pay a lot less, we're at least all hurting. And that, to me, is an indication that we're probably on the right track, that everybody's going to leave this room, even though we're all family members and friends, nobody's happy. And I look at that as a positive thing, and I hope that that can, because we don't want to go to mediation. I think it's a black eye for the whole county. Hopefully, we can get this resolution with the amendments and move on to another day for Henry County, because fighting with your family members never feels good.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else have any comments, District Three?
All the other comment I want to make is I think Buddy's really reached out to this board, and all they're asking is show us the numbers, show me the money. So, I think there's some good negotiations that we can be doing here, and I think we can work through this.
Yes, sir, District Four.
Sherry, I know the city has reached out to the sheriff. Would you provide the numbers that the sheriff provided to provide service in the city of Stockbridge, which should be a pretty good gauge, you know, if he's providing the same level of service that we're providing? I just want the public to see here what exactly we're dealing with.
You need to make sure that all the information is delivered correctly.
We ask the sheriff to give us a full police service requirement, top-notch, the whole works, of which we don't get none. The reason is, you don't have a full staff of employees. You haven't had a full staff of employees. You don't even meet the requirements of having a full staff. Okay? What we were talking with the sheriff was, is have a full staff. So, don't get misled by some numbers that we ask the sheriff to give based on what we would hope the county could eventually get to. Because if we do, we're all going to get better service. They give you another 50 officers, you're going to be able to cover the county a lot better, aren't you, Sheriff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where we going to get the money?
You just gave me a raise.
I know.
Somebody prepare to move in any direction?
Commissioner Prince? Still present the information? The sheriff did provide Stockbridge a cost estimate. It was two columns, one was for a new department, and that would be a new startup department at a cost of $5,157,370. And if the sheriff had to take on the additional responsibilities of handling the police services for the city of Stockbridge under what he classifies as a sheriff's office expansion, that would be at a cost of $4,326,689.
That startup?
That is the initial startup cost, yes, sir. And then for the second year, it goes down to $2.92974,541. And that's, again, if the sheriff's office expanded. Now, for the new department, the second year cost would be $3,337,150.
And then with our 1.2 rollback and the 900, that's what, 2.1 that we're asking? So, the difference is $800,000 lower. We're $800,000 lower than the sheriff.
That is correct, based on the information that was provided by the sheriff, yes, sir.
And Chairman, if I could reiterate again, I think Mr. Welch made the point, again, it's somewhat apples and oranges in the comparison versus what's currently being provided versus a full-service department. And also, going back to speak on, with Chief mentioned, he's right. He's come to the, I know since I've been at the city, he's been there at least once or twice to provide numbers, and again, we couldn't be more happy, as I stated, with the service that we're getting from the department. Back, and I believe it was in January, we did get some numbers from them indicating that between 15, 16% was the number of calls associated with the city of Stockbridge. So, from there, the estimate of 1.2 as far as what the Stockbridge residents, resident taxpayers were paying toward police services, that was a county estimate of 1.2. We provided documentation to show, reflect that number actually being 1.8, and that's kind of always been a sticking point that, to my knowledge, has never been clarified.
The fallacy, the fallacy in the chief's argument is, and it's not his fault, but he has nine call areas that parts of Stockbridge in. And the only way that you can make a determination as to what was called in Stockbridge is you have to take the CAD sheet, relate the call to the address, and you can't just say Center Street, because part of Center Street is in the county and part of Center Street is in the city on one side or the other. So, you have to go and make sure that the house on that side of the road is inside the city. You know, you could spend $35,000 pretty quickly trying to determine that. We had the same issue to come up in DeKalb County, excuse me, in Gwinnett County, when we were dealing with all of that issues in behalf of the cities. And it won't work, is the only way I can say it.
Yeah, and I realized that in 2010 when I looked at the SDS agreement, because what he's saying is exactly right. It might have happened on one street, and part of it's in the county, part of it's in the city. But we, since then, we've been hand tallying. So, the officer knows and knows to ask 911, is this the city or is this the county? And they will then tell them whether it's city or county. We will mark that, and it's a labor-intensive way to determine whether or not it's in the city. And we actually provide the city on a monthly basis their statistics, what happened in the city, and I think that's been happening for about four years now. And let me just reemphasize that when we do get a call in the city of Stockbridge, and again, that SDS agreement says two officers per shift, if their two officers are used up, we don't hold, that call doesn't get held. We dispatch an officer to that call. So, we're not holding calls or anything like that.
That is what is absolutely wrong with the whole thing. Those two officers are additional services that are supposed to stay in the city to be there on a call for the city if we need them at the council meeting, we need them at court, we need them to go run a red light, operate a red light, operate anything for the city. They're supposed to be sitting there at our beckoning call with a clear understanding that if some major catastrophe happened, like a stabbing, they could pull those two officers out to go assist the county. But they were there for the city. And that was services that we were paying $500,000 for. And all, you know, and Chief brought up about somebody getting stabbed at Waffle House. If somebody got stabbed in Fairview, which is part of the unincorporated area, you're going to send the same number of officers up there, are you not?
Yes, sir. That's why I say we don't differentiate.
It's economy of scale. That's the reason the city of Stockbridge was the first one to do away with their fire department and join Henry County, because economy of scale gave the taxpayers in Stockbridge a better tax relief. And that's the reason we want to stay with the county police department as long as we can. Please vote, please vote on the proposal. on the proposal.
If Stockbridge decides not to move forward with the agreement, how will your department serve those citizens until they're able to figure out what direction they want to go?
Well, I think the biggest thing is, is we're a little bit confused, and we've sought legal, with the legal minds, on whether or not we actually have jurisdiction if the contract runs out. I think the DA's office has been consulted, the state court solicitor has been consulted. I know from the DA's office perspective is, they're concerned that evidence in a major crime, a major felony, would not be admissible in court without that agreement. So, obviously, we're not going to let somebody that's in dire need, a life-threatening situation, we would have to go in there and give them aid. I mean, that's just what we do. We don't want to differentiate between the citizens of Stockbridge or the citizens of unincorporated. It's just whether or not what we're doing up there is benefiting and making a felony arrest, is it going to get tossed out in court? Is it, you know, I think that's what is the major bone of contention right now. If the agreement lapses, what kind of authority do we truly have? And I agree with Patrick, our county attorney. We do have, we can go anywhere in the state, serve a warrant, we do have arrest powers. But I think when you start getting down to motion to suppress hearings and all that, that's where it's going to evolve and come out and maybe even make case law.
And I'll tell you, the district attorney and I have talked about this on a few occasions, and we don't know the answer to what happens during a prosecution. I mean, the law, the law doesn't contemplate this situation. The law that says counties and cities have to have agreements to serve outside their boundaries, it's there especially for police services to prevent competition, not to, it's not there for the vacuum. You know, Stockbridge would have a vacuum of police services. That law is really there so we don't have Henry County Police running in there and competing with Stockbridge City Police. That's the reason that that law exists. And it came out of situations where that's exactly what happened. I can tell you, when I was at University of Georgia in Athens, there were county police and city police and university police all on the same streets. Now, they ultimately consolidated their police departments, but you had multiple, you had different police departments competing for making arrests, because it was fun, I guess, to arrest students. But that's not the situation we have here. The law applies to us, to all of us here in sort of this vacuum of a situation. And the law doesn't expect that any jurisdiction will go without law enforcement. It doesn't expect that. And I've had, I've spent time with the ACCG on this issue. I've spent time with the prosecuting attorney's counsel on this issue. Nobody knows the answer to what's going to happen in, ultimately, in a criminal prosecution. Things happen in those cases that we can't control. So, it's a, I think we are far, we are all far better off with an agreement than without an agreement. You know, what the terms of those agreement need to be, that's why you sit in your chairs.
Yes, sir, District One.
Sherry, we got two options from Stockbridge, correct?
There were two options that Michael and I met on immediately following the meeting on the 16th. Yes, sir.
One of them was, I think, $750,000 and 25% of the tax in full.
Well, one option, and I think the preferred option from the city, was to increase the city's annual payment to $750,000 with an additional $50,000 to be added for every, and Michael and I originally said 10,000. The city did come back and say we would drop it from 10,000 to 7,500 new residents, based on the annual population figures as provided by the Atlanta Regional Commission. Now, that also, there was a caveat to that, that that would not include any new annexations that occurred within the city limits. This would be only for new residents.
So, wasn't one option, whoa, we got 25% of the?
That was option one. We originally proposed to you all, and I think Michael took back to his counsel, the annual payment of $500,000, but Michael and I could not come to an agreement on the percentage in terms of fines and forfeitures. I think I originally recommended 50%. I don't recall what Michael's counter was, but I do believe, and Michael certainly correct me, that the city has held to no percentage of the fines and forfeitures.
That's correct. That's discussing with the council. Their preference was that second option that was tied to the population increase.
It went from 10,000 down to 7,500.
7,500, as an increase of 7,500. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
If not, does somebody entertain a motion to resolve this issue temporarily? If not, I guess the contract expires tonight at midnight, and we'll just see where it goes from there.
I'll make a motion that we do a 30-day extension. Would 30-day work for you?
Yes, sir, like his.
Okay, we got to tell you. District Three has the floor.
Yeah, we got to wait for District Four. I mean, he's been leading the charge on this deal, so.
District Three has the floor. District Three has the floor.
Well, I'll just withdraw my motion this time.
Okay, we have a withdrawal from District Three. I yield the floor to District Five.
No, I was just saying, since District Four has been at the forefront of this, we can't make a motion without him being up here on the bench.
Okay, we're going to wait on the missing District Four.
District Four, they wanted to wait till you got back before they took any motions. So, District Four is now present. So, now, where are we? I think they're looking for you to make a motion.
Given the fact we have made some positive movements, and I'm very concerned with the fact that if there was a crime in the city, that we would not be able to gather the evidence and maybe prosecute, and that's just unacceptable. I am concerned that we've been dealing this for seven months now, eight months, and we really hadn't made much leeway. Commissioner Holmes, where are you at on this?
I'm okay with the current agreement that Sherry presented a little bit earlier. I think it gives Stockbridge, I mean, we've been talking about this for eight months now, and I think it gives Stockbridge some time today to review it, look over it, and make a decision on if they want to move forward. The chief of police already said that we would still service those citizens, and I think it gives them, you know, ample time to make a decision on what they want to do. What I don't want to do is go out another eight, nine months negotiating this when there are other important things that we have to handle as a county, and I just want to get caught up in the back and forth. So, I'm okay with the 900 over three years.
And I understand, Mike, you know, about the splotch, and we can extend further on, I mean, obviously, but this would be just a stopgap, kind of to move on.
Even though he's not in this district, he just did some numbers, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Preston if he can present those numbers.
I don't know that I was ready, because I felt like we were in a positive place with this thing. So, I don't know, this might have, this is more for?
I don't take any of this personal. I just think, you know, as a county, you know, we need to, you know, get our just due, and I don't think that's happening right now. And Stockbridge is the largest city in this county, and I think it's time for Stockbridge to start looking at developing its own police force. But until then, you know, I have no issues with the county assisting them and helping them with that endeavor.
Back to the point, you know, I think we said it earlier, the current resolution, as it stated, as we've heard, again, we haven't even seen it yet, would not be acceptable to the city. So, that would put us back to where we were before. Again, I think we had a resolution that was proposed with a couple amendments from the county attorney that the city would certainly be agreeable to, but the resolution, as we've heard, again, haven't seen anything as of yet, we would not be agreeable to. Again, as we've asked, we simply wanted the numbers to be able to substantiate how they came up with the 900,000. That's all we've been asking for from day one. So, again, I think we've made great strides, but the resolution as proposed would not be acceptable to the city.
Can we get, you know, we've been asking about these numbers, and it's been a little hard on our side to quantify, because we do, you know, we did look at the 15% of the calls, but you can't weight it like that. It doesn't work like that, because, you know, calling Kellytown, maybe we have somebody on a four-wheeler riding on the road, so we just send an officer, it takes a few minutes. Calling the city of Stockbridge, again, maybe a stabbing. So, you can't, and I'm not saying it's a bad place.
No, and Commissioner, with all due respect, that's all that we've received from the county, which was that percentage.
Right.
So, we use that as a basis, and we still haven't been able to see how it's been substantiated.
Could we get these numbers, I mean, accurately, something I can stand behind and fight the fight in two weeks? Is this reasonable, or do you want us to push this out a month?
I truly think we probably need about a month. I do have numbers prepared to give to the board, but like I mentioned earlier, we finally narrowed it down last night to where I felt comfortable with the information. I'll be more than happy to provide the information to Michael for him to review and disseminate with his council members, and also provide the information to you all. But realistically, two weeks, Michael and I were really crunching it. Literally, every day, it was a matter of one text message, one email. I know it was really tough for Michael because of the Fourth of July, and next week, I will be out at Disney World, so that will give me a whole week that I won't have time to deal with it. But certainly, we are more than amenable to sitting down with Michael, with his financial people. I can sit down with my staff here, and we can certainly provide them with the information in how we have actually come up with the $900,000 number.
Could we possibly do a resolution, and I'm asking here the county attorney as well, to where we offer the 900,000 and give the city, not an ultimatum, but a month to look over the numbers, to make a decision, and keep everything in place as it is right now?
Absolutely. I mean, you can say that as your motion, and it will be done.
And to add to that, if, one amendment Patrick added earlier, that at the end of that term, if it's not agreeable, then if both sides would be agreeable to do a mediation, that's something we would like to see considered as well, in an effort to bring this to resolution, so it's not, doesn't continue to be dragged out.
Sherry, that extended time, give you enough time to get the true numbers for the fines and forfeitures?
Yes, sir, because what I will be doing today at the conclusion of this meeting is filing an open records request to the city of Stockbridge requesting that information.
Okay, thank you.
Eight months, and we still don't have the true numbers?
In terms of the fines and forfeitures, no, sir. We don't have a true number on the actual cost for tickets.
And so, if we don't have them now, what makes you think that we're going to get them in the next four weeks?
Well, I will formalize it in a formal request to the city, and by law, they'll have to provide that information to us.
Haven't you done that already?
I've sent emails requesting the information. Michael did follow up with an email indicating what the gross fines and forfeitures costs were in comparison to what the net actual cost is, and I think he clarified that earlier. But we are looking for more specific numbers and more specific definitive answers on what the actual revenues are for the city for tickets only.
So, basically, a month from now, we're going to be going through this exact same thing?
It is my hope that we can get it resolved, and a month from now, we will have an agreement in place, and that all will be well.
And in fairness, the city has simply been asking for numbers as well from the county to substantiate the $900,000 figure. We know there's a differential between what we felt are, what the taxpayers of Stockbridge is paying, county estimated 1.2, we've seen that's been 1.86. So, we've never been able to see any documentation to substantiate the 1.2 number. So, that's something that we've also been, we haven't been able to reconcile as at this point as well.
If we don't come to agreement, we're under no obligation to continue to provide police service to the city. Is that correct?
If there's no agreement.
Well, I don't think there's a, I don't know, I would say that there's no legal obligation that we do so. Whether we do so, separate question, I think we will.
If it's a drop-dead deal, why does the House Bill 49 mention arbitration and then mentions a Superior Court?
Well, it does. I mean, what the House Bill, what the Service Delivery Strategies Act says is, if you're unable to make an agreement, you go through these steps. But it doesn't say, look, there's nothing anywhere in the law that says a county is obligated to provide police services to a city, period. There's no law that says that. So, I'm sorry?
I'm going to make a motion that we go with Sherry presented, the 900,000 over three years.
Could you write that down where I could see it, because there's been a lot of stuff passed across the bench here. And I would like to know, call an opinion how I'm voting.
And if Stockbridge doesn't agree with that agreement, our police chief and staff will put together a plan on how we will cover services for the city of Stockbridge until they're able to make a decision on the direction that they want to go.
And again, that would not be acceptable to the city.
Did you want to include the amendments of the county attorney?
Can you repeat those amendment?
Why don't we, why don't you make the same motion you made, instruct staff to provide the information to the city of Stockbridge that the city has requested?
Instruct staff to do what Patrick just said.
And also direct that if there has been no agreement within a month, that at the next meeting, say the first meeting in August, that I will present to you a date and a mediator to proceed to mediation. That way, this, we won't drag it out. If we show up on August whatever and we don't have a deal, then we're going to say, I will report to you that we're going to go to this place on this date, and we're going to mediate. And if that mediation fails, we'll take the next step. But that way, you've got, we're going to get it out of this room by August 2nd.
That's my motion.
I would suggest that the existing contract remain in place until we hear the city's response and conclude the mediation. So, that way, I mean, we've got a deadline in sight.
Does the city agree with this?
The city hasn't seen that, Chairman.
Say again?
The city has not seen that, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that's the one that, you're not voting on that resolution, Mr. Chairman?
I thought I was. That's what I asked.
No, the resolution is the one he just made, that we're going to make an offer to them of $900,000 pursuant to those terms.
So, this is null and void?
They're going to have time to review it after the meeting and either accept or reject or make a counteroff.
By this 30-day August?
Well, hopefully before then, because y'all need to be talking between now and then.
So, what do they pay?
Buddy and I are going to.
Right.
I'm sorry?
I mean, read it to where I can comprehend it, exactly what the motion is.
The resolution is to extend the offer contained in the resolution in your hand to the city of Stockbridge, but to extend the existing agreement until the first meeting in August, at which time we'll either, they'll either accept that agreement or you'll have to be presented a new agreement. And if there's no agreement on the first meeting of August, we will announce the date of mediation, we'll proceed to mediation.
So, they're going to pay us their prouder share of the 900,000?
They're going to pay pursuant to the existing agreement in the meantime.
Okay.
What I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is, I will, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, that's no good.
I'm going to revise the resolution to reflect what Patrick has indicated. So, I'll get that copy to you all, because the resolution you have doesn't state that.
Okay, I can, that resolution, it is no good, because it talks about 900,000. It's in the trash. So, we're talking about, nothing changes until the first meeting in August of this year, which would be August of 4th. Is that correct? That's the motion in the resolution. Is that correct? Okay, we have a motion.
With our police chief and police force devising a plan on how we're going to serve the citizens. the citizens of Stockbridge, until Stockbridge comes up with a plan to serve themselves, basically, plus the conditions that Patrick, Patrick mentioned.
Okay. So, we basically buying less than 30 days, and that sounds good to me. So, you put that in the form of a motion? Okay. You got a motion. Have a second. Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So, move. County attorney, you're not commenting at all, are you?
I'm all commenting at all.
There'll come a meeting Tuesday, July the 8th at 6:00 p.m. is a call meeting refunding our development authority bonds. Tuesday, July the 21st at 6:30 is a regular meeting. Wednesday, July the 22nd, we'll have two meetings, one meeting at 9:00 a.m., one at 6:00 p.m., a public hearing to discuss a millage rate for the new year. Tuesday, July the 28th at 6:30 is a call meeting to discuss special tax districts for category one and two dams, rehabilitation and maintenance in conference room B. Wednesday, July the 29th at 9:00 a.m. is a public hearing to adopt a new millage rate for the city. Now, I understand we got some issues that needs to be discussed in executive session. So, do we have any acquisition of real estate?
I have no acquisition of real estate. I have one pending litigation matter to discuss.
Okay. We have one pending litigation matter. Do we have any personnel? Okay. There's somebody, I need a motion to adjourn executive session in accordance with provision of OCGA 50-14-3 for the pending and our potential litigation personnel matter. Do we have a motion, District five? Second, District three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, no. Same sign. So, move. Okay.